Okay, can I call this regular council meeting to order, and could we have a certification of the quorum, please?
Yes, sir. Mayor Jason Knight.
Here.
Mayor Protonan, council member, place four, J.R. Haskins.
Here.
Council member, place one, Ruth Gomedy O. Smith.
Here.
Council member, place two, Elise Chikong.
Here.
Council member, place three, Luanna Lu Lu Martin.
Here.
Mayor, there's a quorum of the council present to conduct this meeting.
Okay, thank you. Okay, now, could everyone please rise for the invocation of the Pledge of Allegiance?
We come together this day grateful for the blessings you have placed upon Aransas Pass and its people. As we begin this meeting, we ask for your wisdom to guide our words, your peace to steady our hearts, and your grace to strengthen our partnerships with this community. Unite us in purpose and goodwill that we may serve our neighbors with integrity, compassion, and a spirit of togetherness. May our work tonight honor you and bring continued growth and harmony to Aransas Pass. Amen.
Amen.
Pledge of Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America. And to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, now, we're gonna move into presentations, and there'll be a presentation by Brian Williams, San Patricio Municipal Water District regarding the status of water.
Good evening, Mayor, Council. Brian Williams, I'm the general manager at San Patricio Municipal Water District. Appreciate the opportunity to come this evening to have a few minutes provided. I'll try to do a quick presentation. It looked like y'all kinda had a long agenda for the evening. But would like to mention Doyle Keller is here. He's the representative from Aransas Pass. It sits on our board of directors and is here with us tonight. First off, just a quick update, what's going on with San Patricio Municipal Water District? Jump on into it.
Okay.
From, we, San Patricio Municipal Water District is a part of the regional water system. Corpus Christi being, city of Corpus Christi being kind of the lead player in the regional system for many years. So from our very beginning, in 1951, we were created government entity by the 52nd State Legislature. And from that very beginning, we begot our water from the city of Corpus Christi. The old Cunningham Water Treatment Plant, the Reynolds Aluminum, put in a 24-inch pipeline to the old Cunningham plant over by Labonte Park in Corpus Christi and ran that water to their facility. Over the, over the next few years, somehow or another, I couldn't tell you exactly how, San Patricio Municipal Water District ended up with that pipeline. We began serving the city of Odom as our first customer. And since, we've taken on Odom, Taft, Gregory, Ingleside, Aransas Pass, Rockport, Fulton, the industries along the La Quinta Channel. But we've been serving those folks from the beginning. Look up here as I'm talking, the western sources of water. We're getting Choke Canyon Reservoir and Lake Corpus Christi. Again, the city of Corpus has the water rights on the Neusis Basin. And then they have contracts with Le Vaca-Nabodad River Authority for Lake Texana water. And they also have water rights on the Colorado River. Those are very senior, but one day junior to Lower Colorado River Authority. And there have been a couple of times where L.C.R.A., Lower Colorado River Authority, said, "Corpus, you can't take that water from the Colorado River." But luckily, it hasn't happened much. As we're getting into the drought that we're in right now, we'll kind of see how things proceed. San Patricio Municipal Water District, I mentioned those cities that we serve. About 30% of the water that we sell goes to municipal. The other 70% goes to industrial. So we have a big industrial component of the water that we sell in the region. We have a treated water contract with the city of Corpus Christi. And that contract takes us through 2043. And then we also have a raw water contract with the city, and that is in perpetuity. So we have two long-term contracts with the city of Corpus Christi. So we're getting about 40 million gallons a day from the city. About 27 million of that is raw water, and about 13 million is treated water. And the raw water, we sell some as raw, but most of that, we treated our facility between Gregory and Ingleside.
Brian, can I ask you a question?
Sure.
Yeah, I'm sorry. Worst-case scenario, it doesn't rain, we don't get any water till November, we go into stage four. Is the water gonna be still 70% to the industries and 30% to the populace? Or what are we gonna do there?
The Texas Water Code lays out the process for that, and it is a pro-rata reduction. So everybody fills that reduction. It could, it'd be like a 10%, 15% across the board. So everybody across the board would be asked to reduce, or would have to reduce, that 10% if that was the number. So it's pro-rata, everybody share and share alike. That's, I can't remember, I think 11.039, it's Texas Water Code, and I can't remember the section off the top of my head, but I believe it's 11.039.
So how is heavy industry gonna make that happen? Are they gonna shut down a day? Or how are they gonna scale back on their water usage? Do they need it for operations?
I'll get into a couple of things that we're looking at trying to do. But with industry, you know, they will cut back as they can. But at some point, they would probably just have to shut their facilities down.
Yep.
It's hard for, or shut components of their industry down, you know. Occidental Chemical, they have an ethylene plant on site. They have a chloralkali plant on site. So they might have to shut down one facility. They've got a CoGen plant on site. So it'll be, we're getting into areas that we've never been before.
And they're very aware of that?
Oh, yes, yes.
Okay.
Very much, very much.
Okay.
But this is a slide that we've developed, I guess everybody can see that. The, the blue, solid blue area, that's the, the volume of water that's available from the Neusis Basin, Lake Corpus Christi, and Choke Canyon Reservoir. And you can see, back in 2010 or so, there's some good rains brought the volume up. But really, since about 2010, 2011, you really haven't seen that, that lake, those lakes being able to recover from that drought. So that's the situation that we're in right now. On top of that, you can see the red line, that's the, the percent full for Lake Texana. And as you get to November 11th of 2025, we're at 72%. And I believe it's gone, just dipped a little bit below 70% today. So the drought that we're in, some people may say that, well, we oversold to industry. And I'll show us some numbers that I don't believe we've, we've oversold to industry. We're just in a drought that we've never seen before. The amount of, or lack of rain that we're seeing right now. So one of the things that this will also, that we need to start, or that we are thinking about, as you see these water levels drop down, particularly in the Neusis River, the water quality's continuing to get a little bit worse. We, one of the things that we look at very closely, total dissolved solids, your salts that are in the water, they're starting to build up because there is no water flushing some of those out. So we're seeing negative impacts on the water quality. Excuse me. Next, please.
So can I ask you a question in regards to that? So if it's already impacting the quality of water, why isn't Neusis County working with heavy industries to start cutting back today to an extreme where it will start to benefit the water supply versus continuously remove the water supply?
Let me show you a graph in just a minute, and I'll show you another one that will kind of go along with that. And feel free to come back and ask me that question, if you would, please. This is a graph that's from the city of Corpus's website, Corpus Christi Water. I think it's a really interesting slide. For the month of September, the region used 108.99 million gallons. So you can, if you use those percentages, like 108.99 times .65 for the Mary Rhodes Pipeline, you can see how many gallons came in from the Mary Rhodes Pipeline, which is about 70 million gallons a day. They've increased the water that's coming from those eastern sources over the last few months. But then, you look to the right side, middle ways down, San Patricio Municipal Water District. So we're getting about 13% of our water from the Mary Rhodes Pipeline and 12% from the Neusis River. And then we're also, although it really doesn't, it doesn't show it on this graph, there's water coming out of the city of Corpus's Owen Stevens Plant that comes around to us. It's being treated through their facility, about 13 million gallons a day. So we're getting water from those sources. Next slide. This is another one from the city of Corpus's website. I think it provides some really good information to look at. The three hump curves on top, that is the demand of this area. So that's how much water we're consuming. Varies, as you can see, those three peaks are during the summer. So of course, during the summer, we're using more water. I think you'll probably see is, one of the numbers that I'll talk about in a little bit, that we are reducing some of those summer flows. Because we're in stage three, you're not supposed to be watering your grass. So we're, we're not using a lot of that water out there. But with those three hump curves, as you, you can look and see that there's bars running vertically on that. Light blue and then a dark blue. So the light blue bars are the water that's coming from the eastern lakes, Lake Texana, Lower Colorado. The western supply is the darker blue from the Neusis Basin. So the demand curve, that's how we're meeting our demand. Those water supplies, and those are, you can kind of figure, try to figure out those percentages. But as you look at March of '25, somewhere in there, that's when we did some improvements on the Mary Rhodes Pipeline and start bringing in more water from Mary Rhodes. So that light blue bar was extended up, and that's started taking less from the Neusis Basin. But the darker blue line that's running horizontally across there, that's, that's the indicator of where the western lakes are. And we're 15%, 10%. They're predicting, if there are no rains, that we, and we stay in this really dry period, that the western lakes will start going down to zero pretty much about May of '27. About that same time, you'll see that we're not, those blue bars don't reach up to that demand curve. So that's kind of the projection of where we're looking at, that we first wouldn't be able to meet the demand curve. So if you look back to the left from that May of '27, about 180 days, six months, the big red box in the middle towards the bottom, Level One Emergency, that's when we think it will be there, November 2026. That's when it's projected.
Okay, then, Brian?
Yes.
If it's gonna be that way, you've got all your graphs and all of this technical stuff telling you that. We're in stage three right now, why don't we just go to stage four right now and start eliminating some of that problem?
I don't know that we would eliminate that much, I guess. You know, at the same time, this time of year, we're getting past some evaporation. Let me see. Give me two slides, and I'll show you something. It's a good question, but let me, again, let me come back to a couple of those things, maybe why we're not doing it now. Next slide. This is the firm yield line that the city of Corpus has developed. And if you look back to the left side, the top blue line has the firm yield on it. The city of Corpus, in our water system, had about 219,000 acre foot per year available. In 2017, after the drought ended from the 2013, 14, 15 drought, you can see that blue line was reduced from 219 to 186,000 acre foot per year. And the firm yield is, I guess, based on history. That's telling you how much water you can use, 189,000, 189,000 acre foot. And you should, based on your water resources, be able to use up to that much every year and still not run out of water. That's the statistics, that's what they tell you. You could use up to 189,000 acre foot per year. That graph I showed, or the chart I showed a while ago, where we were using 108.99 million gallons for the month, what that number translates to in acre foot's 122,000. So we're using less than 122,000 acre foot a year. We're supposed to have 189,000 acre foot to year. But because of the drought we're in, and no replenishment in the lakes, that water's not there. So that firm yield number in the future is gonna be reduced from 189. It's got to, because we can't actively develop 189,000 acre foot like the statistics show. We're in a new drought of record, it's worse conditions we've seen. So back on this graph, what it indicates is the firm yield. The solid blue below is the demand or consumption that we're having. So that graph is another one that indicates, you know, we're about 75% of that firm yield. We're only using 75% of the firm yield of the number, but we're still looking at those numbers that are 10% or so on the lake levels. We're working into, into a new area that we haven't seen before. As you move across to the right of that graph, 2028. At one point, I guess, when this graph was developed, the city of Corpus Christi was moving forward with the Inner Harbor Desal Plant. Some of those things changed on September the 2nd. I guess the contract began to get terminated with Kiwan. I think they are re-looking at Inner Harbor. But the Inner Harbor Plant, the 30 million gallons a day, was going to be able to increase that firm yield number up for several years. But we're on a delayed schedule right now. So, next, please. One of the questions, Councilwoman Martin, that we talked about a while ago. You said, "Why don't we go ahead and cut back?" This graph, it's typical of what we see in this area. It is this area, this is just, it hadn't been updated. But if you look at the, the red line, that is the monthly combined evaporation from the Lake Corpus Christi and Choke Canyon Reservoir. So that's during the summer, you get those big peaks where you get a lot of evaporation. The blue line below that is the monthly M&amp;I diversions. That's municipal and industrial, the monthly municipal and industrial diversions. So what that graph indicates is that we're actually only using a small portion, a smaller portion of the water that's out there in the system. So even if we cut those industries back, you're not changing those red demands on evaporation. We're seeing with the western reservoirs especially, you see so much evaporation off the surface of those lakes. You might, in my opinion, you might as well be using that, because you're not gonna stop evaporation. And the consumption is such a small portion of that water that I don't know that cutting back industry, some of those things, or how beneficial they could actually be, because evaporation's still gonna be going on while you're doing that.
Pardon me.
Sure.
My little brain is having a hard time deciphering your reasoning.
Okay.
Because the way I look at it, and I would think my fellow councilmembers would agree, if we're using currently half this bottle of water in usage, and we're losing the other half to evaporation, the evaporation. I'm just, just for demonstration purposes.
Okay.
This we cannot control. This we can. We need to control this. And if it means, you know, coming down on heavy industry who uses 70% of the water, then even though it's a minimal amount every day, that minimal amount every day will add up, and it will be significant, or we would not currently be in the drought that we're in today.
I disagree. It would be significant. Because evaporation is such a large portion of the water that is consumed in the area.
So you're saying the more water we have, the more water's gonna evaporate? Because that's basically what you just said.
Yes, that's true. There'd be more surface area on the lakes, so you would be evaporating more.
Hmm.
I don't know, I don't have those numbers, but you, I guess, you would be evaporating more if there was more surface area on that water.
That's interesting. Okay.
Because the operating plan for the two lakes, Choke Canyon Reservoir and Lake Corpus Christi, the operating plan for those lakes, you store as much in Choke Canyon Reservoir as you can, because it's a deeper lake with less surface area. So you have less evaporation. And you release water from Choke Canyon Reservoir as needed to come down to Lake Corpus Christi, which is shallower and has much more surface area. It will evaporate more water.
That's interesting. Like I said, my little brain can understand what you're saying, but I'm gonna take what you're saying at face value. Because to me, I look at it as, if we're conserving water, eventually over time, the water levels will go up. Yes, we'll have evaporation, but will it, will it eventually steady out? Or will evaporation be more than the usage/consumption savings?
And I'm not saying you wouldn't be saving some. If you cut back, if industry cut back 10%, would there be a 10% additional water in the reservoirs available in the future? No.
No, but maybe there'd be 6% or 8%.
Could be, could be.
And meanwhile, we're just waiting for doomsday versus being proactive or being reactive. I don't like when we're reactive. I like to be proactive when we can. That's just personal.
And the city, and the city of Corpus Christi is doing some things to extend those bars out to, on one of the previous graphs, to extend bars out past that May of 2027, developing some water in the Neusis, along the Neusis River. They have, I guess, indicated that they are going They have, I guess, indicated that they are going to purchase water from the Evangeline Laguna in San Patricio County and try to develop some of that water. But we are on a tight timeline. Right now, the only thing that will get us out of this drought is more rain. I can tell you that. There's, we are a water system that is based on surface water, and if there's no rain, there's no surface water. The City of Corpus is moving forward with doing some groundwater alternatives, but they are not enough to get us out of the drought that we're in right now.
No, but it possibly could prolong-
Yes.
-the time that we do have sustainable water.
Correct.
And help us get out of this drought.
Yes, ma'am.
What, Brian, what does stage four, uh, cutback, what does it consist of?
To be determined. Uh, the City of Corpus Christi, we are a, a, a member of that regional system, so the City of Corpus Christi will determine at what point, I guess, and and they could call something, I guess, prior to that level one emergency that's coming, potentially coming. But, uh, I guess, is that gonna be a ten percent reduction, a fifteen percent reduction, a twenty percent reduction? We do not know that right now. I guess, one of the things that I heard the city manager of Corpus, or City of Corpus, city manager said was, you know, by the end of twenty-five, this this month, they were hoping to be able to kinda give indications to the, to the cu- to their own folks, to us as a customer of the city, what those reductions might look like. But I don't know that any of this-
Well, they're not talking about, uh, stage four till November of next year, twenty-six. Why so long?
We're playing Russian roulette with our water supply, is what was happening.
The, uh-
We're playing Russian roulette with our water supply.
The TCEQ, I guess, does not consider an emergency until you're a hundred and eighty days short of making your supply.
I I think she just said it just perfectly, Russian roulette.
Well, this hard, this, this deal in November, it's a pretty scary scenario, because Brian answered it, these refineries, they don't have a valve to choke off water. Those units are either a hundred percent water intake or zero, and that's the very scary part.
That's all the jobs.
Because these refineries start shutting down.
Jobs.
Towns like this will be, take a major, massive-
Well, Brian and I discussed that last time about industry coming in here, and then we have no water because of more industry, but we have people living here, but there's no water, and so people will leave here anyway.
Yeah, it's a double-edged sword.
It's a double-edged sword.
It's a very difficult, delicate balance-
Yeah.
-that we're trying to maneuver our ways through this. Uh, I think-
You, you know the scientific end of it, Brian, and that's not our forte. Uh, you know, quite truthfully, none of that makes any sense to me at all. It's just, there's just too much usage and not enough savings. But I don't know how to fix it either, that's your job.
Yeah.
If you do that.
We're, we are facing a drought like we've never seen before. That, that's what I can say, that, uh, usually, you know, typically, you're getting some rains coming in between, but as you can see, since two thousand and eleven, we just never have recovered and been able to fill any of the lakes to, uh, to, to get us where we need to be.
Is it because of a whole lot more usage since then, or is it the same?
Well, in two thousand and sixteen, uh, City of Corpus Christi put on the, uh, the extension of the Mary Rhodes Pipeline, and we added another thirty million gallons a day to the system. And if you look at, you know, the big customers that San Patricio has taken on since that point, two thousand and sixteen, Gulf Coast Growth Ventures, they're taking about thirteen million gallons a day, Steel Dynamics, it's taking about three million gallons a day, that's sixteen million, but we added thirty. So, and there really hasn't been that much growth on the municipal side. In fact, one of the things I wanted to mention, that, you know, over the last year, we've seen a reduction, you know, from our customers, in fact, Aransas Pass is down about fifteen percent, eleven months over eleven months, from twenty-four and twenty-five, so, kudos, appreciate y'all doing y'all's, you know, y'all's part on that.
Thank you.
So, uh, but that's, we're gonna continue to evaporate water and continue to be in the situation we're in, when we're a surface water, a surface water system, and there's no rain coming into the system. So-
I seen, I seen rain the other day, it just didn't come our way.
Not, it's not in the basin. I mean, it is helping some, of course, you know, it's, at this point, just kinda keeping some yards-
Yeah.
A lighter shade of brown, I guess, a little more green, but, uh, something for the weeds to come up, but, uh, there is some green out there, but, uh, the water that we're seeing is just not falling in the watershed, or not making it into the lakes. So it's, we're going through a rough time. Let me talk about a few, a couple of things that we're doing. San Patricio, try to get a little bit positive. Uh, next slide, please. Uh, some of the things that we're doing, we, Corpus Christi's trying, uh, trying to develop some other water resources. It's gonna be, it's, it's tough when you are a surface water system, it's been that years, and it's been, uh, you've had the rains coming in fairly regularly and been able to replenish the system, and it's not coming now, so they are looking at some other things. Couple of things that San Patricio is doing, in the short term, uh, we are talking with Port of Corpus Christi, that has about three thousand acres, uh, Commerz Occidental Chemical, and looking at maybe trying to drill some brackish water wells on our side, between Gregory and Engle Side. Uh, and the intent is, don't know how much water we can produce, nobody's ever really drilled wells into these brackish waters, because it's brackish, it's, it's hard to treat, uh, it's expensive to treat. But we are gonna try to drill several wells, uh, they're gonna be expensive, but the, the intent is that we'll drill these wells, and the brackish water, we'll RO treat it, reverse osmosis treat it, get the salt out, send it to industry. That will free up some of the water for the residential side, so, you might ask, why aren't you bringing that to the residential side? You gotta get, if you do that, then you have to go through the TCEQ to get approval to put it in the potable system, it'll be much quicker to develop it and get it on the industrial side and free up water on the other side. So we are currently looking at that. There's probably about six thousand acres between, uh, the Port of Corpus Christi, Oxy, Commerz, and us. And according to the San Patricio County Groundwater Conservation District, we can develop about one point two five acre foot per, per acre, so that'd probably be five, six million gallons of water that we might be able to produce that way. Uh, that's gonna be, we're working on that right now. I've submitted an application, uh, to the San Patricio County Groundwater Conservation District. Hopefully, it'll get approved for at least us to go in and drill the first well to see what we have. But I know one of, uh, someone in the area drilled a well down to eight hundred foot, and the water coming up was twenty-six thousand milligrams per liter TDS, just like, just about what bay water is. So they had to cement that bottom part, and when you cut off some of that water at the bottom, you're producing less out of the well, but they were able to get the TDS down a little bit lower, so it could be treatable. So we're, we're looking at some of those alternatives. Uh, next slide, please, or, excuse me, that's the six thousand acres. Next, please, Mary. City of Corpus Christi, uh, they have a contract on the area in Green, the Evangeline Laguna, uh, about, should produce about twenty-five million gallons a day. They haven't finalized that contract, but they are moving forward, uh, with some, uh, engineering development on that, trying to expedite the potential of developing water from that facility. It sounds like there may be some hurdles, uh, coming with some permits that the, the city would need to receive. Uh, don't know, there may be some people contesting those, just have heard that, so I, uh, there may be some obstacles. But that intent, uh, City of Corpus Christi's hoping to be able to develop twelve million gallons a day of water from that and have it online, uh, by November of twenty six, twenty twenty-six. Uh, but with that, uh, San Patricio Municipal Water District, in the middle of that green area, uh, there's those two rectangles stuck together, it's called the Ally Ranch, and, uh, San Patricio, we're talking with, uh, an attorney that represents those landowners, and so we are looking at potentially, uh, getting those water rights for, to develop at some point in the future. Uh, the, the owners of that land aren't looking for a, a quick turn on cash, they're looking for something more in the long term. So the thought is, uh, that we could possibly reserve those water rights and develop them at some point in the future, and, uh, the way our financial model works, I believe we could just tie that, that all that, it's five thousand acres, about five million gallons a day, could be reserved for our municipal customers for the future. But it is, uh, probably, uh, seven to eight hundred milligrams per liter TDS. We like to see T, uh, total dissolved solids lower than that, but it is water and could be available to us, so that's one of the, another thing that we're looking at. Next. That's kind of medium term and in the long term. Uh, I've sent a letter to, uh, city manager at Corpus. Uh, the City of Corpus Christi was moving forward with the La Quinta Desalination Facility, uh, facility that was gonna be located in the vicinity of our plant, uh, close to, I guess, the intake would be their biooccidental chemical. Uh, I guess, after the city had the issues, that they, I guess, put the piles on the Inner Harbor Desal Plant. Uh, this letter's dated September the eighteenth, I sent this letter to the city manager, uh, asking, or requesting for us to be able to negotiate with the city, thinking that they may not be, if they're having trouble on the Inner Harbor, I don't know that they would wanna be moving forward with the La Quinta Plant. So, uh, if it, if it is available and they aren't moving forward with that, uh, I think San Patricio would be beneficial for us to consider that as a future facility for water for our side. Next, please. Of course, one of the concerns that we continue to hear about that is, uh, the discharge from a desal plant, what would the salinity do to the bay? In my mind, and this is a graph that was developed, uh, far, far the Inner Harbor, far the, uh, La Quinta Plant by Freezing Nichols, and, and this graph shows over time, nineteen eighty-seven to twenty twenty, the variations in salinity on Corpus Christi Bay, and kinda not, not the, not the two extremes, but, uh, where the majority of the dots are, ninety-five percentile, uh, the salinity of the bay ranges from twenty-five parts per thousand to forty-two parts per thousand, so there's a delta, seventeen parts per thousand salinity on the bay, just as it goes from day to day without any desal plants. If you were to, to put two desal plants, which would be the Inner Harbor and the La Quinta Plant, discharging, uh, I guess, not discharging, but, uh, making seventy million gallons a day, thirty million gallons a day on the Inner Harbor, forty million gallons a day at the La Quinta Plant, what you would see as far as a salinity increase, the width of one of those dots is point eight parts per thousand. So that graph with those two desal plants, you would see that graph move up less than the width of one of those dots. That's the salinity impact on the bay from, uh, two desal plants. Uh, people that are concerned about the, uh, the salinity of the bay, you've gotta think, uh, the natural things that are going on, evaporation that's going on on the surface of the bay, that you're evaporating pure water off, and that salinity salts are staying in the water. There's enough tidal exchange, inflows into the bay, I believe it's one point four years, there's a full turnover of that bay. Some people say, well, it's a, it's a closed bay, well, it's not a closed bay, because if it's a closed bay, it'd be like the Dead Sea, the salts would continue to, to go up to full saturation, and that's not what's happening in our Corpus Christi Bay, and it would not happen with a couple of desal plants on it. Next slide, please.
Brian, you, uh, last time we talked, you told me there was another one called Perth or Perch or something like that-
Perth.
-Bay in Saudi Arabia?
No, that one's in Australia.
Australia?
Perth, yes, sir.
And that's in a bay that's doing this?
Yes.
Okay.
Similar, not exact, but similar.
The, uh, I'd ask you for those reports on that, are you still gonna be able to get that from him?
I'll do that. Sorry.
No problem.
Uh, and this is just, uh, kind of a location map that Freezing Nichols had done for the, uh, La Quinta Desal Plant. Uh, the little blue kinda triangle, uh, on the left side, I don't know, I, I don't know if it-
Follow the bouncing ball.
Up towards the top, up towards the top. Uh, there we go, if we're gonna look at that part. Uh, that little kinda blue and green triangle, that's the location, proposed location of the La Quinta Desal Plant itself. Uh, just to the left of that is San Patricio Municipal Water District, uh, and that's along three sixty-one, uh, right in front of Oxy and Commerz, that's where it's proposed to be located. Uh, if you go to the left side of that screen and go down to the bay, you see that red line, or red couple of rectangles, and they go north, and then over to the facility, that's the intake for the facility, proposed intake for the facility, water rights, and they already have the water rights for that facility. Uh, on the right side of that, the yellow line, that's headed down to the bay, that's the discharge line. One of the things that I know there have been comments made about, uh, the Port of Corpus Christi had a La Quinta Desal Plant, but their intake and discharge was located down towards the back end, bottom end of the La Quinta Channel. This is up in the area of, uh, more of the wider part of the channel, where there are more water flows, more dispersion. So, uh, that permit application is at the TCEQ now, the, the, uh, computer modelers are going through the simulations on it, uh, to see if it's accurate as far as, uh, the discharges, to, to make sure that it's not creating any problems for the bay. So I, I think it's something that if the City of Corpus Christi has some interest to turn it over, I think, uh, it would be a good opportunity for San Patricio Municipal Water District and its customers for the future, so. With that, I probably talked too long, got too much into, to, uh, it, but it's a serious, serious concern right now for all of us, and I understand that. I'll try, I'll be glad to try to answer any questions that maybe I haven't been able to address so far.
Meyer?
Come on up, Meyer.
Yes, sir.
Come up to the podium.
Meyer, yeah, come up here, Meyer.
On the last, uh, oh, my wrench rater, two four six, he started. Uh, I have a question about the, the salinity in the bays-
Yes, sir.
-and the salinity in the channel, with this last, uh, uh, desal plant that you were talking about.
Yeah.
It, it's gonna be discharged into a wider part of that channel.
Correct.
Okay. Now, the salinity of the bay, yeah, it's gonna vary a little bit, and it, and putting a desal plant won't affect that for quite a while because of the diffusion, it has to, the diffusion of the solids have to meet, reach that spot where you're sampling. So it's all sampling dependent, in my opinion. Okay? If you put it in this channel itself, how is the channel and the, the, what do you call them, the estuaries that we have, how are tho- are those gonna be affected?
Of course, okay, yeah, yeah.
Of course, we're a long ways from-
Of course, yeah, of course, we're a long ways from those estuaries back up at the back end of Nuasis Bay, but, uh, just trying to talk through it here, I appreciate it.
No, no problem.
The, uh, there's a couple of things, Freezer Nichols, I guess, uh, in their work in putting that permit application together, they, uh, in the channel itself, they put some acoustic, let me see, acoustic Doppler current profilers, ADCPs, in the, in the channel itself to see how the water movement was in the channel-
Okay.
-uh, which went into their modeling that they did. And then also, uh, I guess where, where these discharge actually into the bay, there's a jet diffuser on the end of that that disperses that water out so that within 400 meters, there's very, you can hardly see the salt itself because it has been dispersed in the volume, so.
Okay.
And you got to think about, again, when you think about the natural processes going on, evaporation, everything else, there's a lot of dynamics going on, on that-
Right.
-channel on the bay every day, so.
Okay, okay, that is a great question, good, thank you.
Appreciate it.
Brian, uh, you mentioned meeting wire, I mentioned last time-
Hey Dennis, do me a favor, come up here so everybody can hear you.
I mentioned last time a concern about producing water, and that was done by iodine crystal by the use of military back in 1965. They developed it throughout the years, and at the same time, the iodine crystal has proven itself to produce the rain. The matter of Cho Canyon and the matter of Mathis, with a situation like what happened in Kerrville with the water being influenced by the hurricane out of Mexico and the upper level low, the water became extreme. And at the same time, we have collectors to catch the water, Cho Canyon, as you mentioned, and also Lake Mathis. Those two water bodies are right there within the context of water coming out of San Antonio. But if you flew the proper aircraft with iodine crystal that was used to get rid of the big cones in the tunnels back in the mid 60s, it would help create a solution that we need, not just militarily, but for the purpose of what we're looking for, water.
Dennis, Dennis, are you talking about cloud seeding?
He's talking about cloud seeding.
Yes.
That's a word for it, yes, sir, but what they were doing was actually getting the big cone out of the, uh, tunnels. And so they had come up with a method that would produce the water, similar in context to seeding, but that's a very loose term, so I'm trying to say that what they are doing is creating water for a purpose of getting rid of a problem of getting big cone out of the tunnels. It worked, got them out in the open.
Did it flood them out?
It flooded them out.
Okay.
And the same thing about what happened there with Kerrville, the massive water content came in from Mexico with the hurricane in combination with the upper level low within the area of Kerrville, creating 30 foot of water, that was too extreme for the location. I'm just saying it's a possibility, I'm not telling you it'll work unless we try, but you said it, you need to have production of rain, and there is a possibility, I don't think it's looked into because it's cloud seeding. Cloud seeding is too loose a term, but iodine crystal produces it, that's what they used. And they applied it at the Hurricane Celia during 1970 and created a monster, because they were trying to cool it down from the inside of the eye, and that way it would stay and drop its pressure, but it didn't work that way. It became a worst storm, so.
Any thoughts on that, Brian?
Pardon?
I don't know much about cloud seeding or iodine crystals, so I couldn't-
Sounds expensive.
But that's the thing, it's not really commonly known. But I do know the military kept it a secret, and yet they were available, they used the system up in the Panhandle, and there wasn't a cloud in the sky, but it flooded the community. And since then, I don't know if the community's still available.
About 20, 15, 20 years ago, the same thing-
Yes, sir.
-happened in New Mexico, out of, uh, out of the Magroto area, White Sands. So I know what you're talking about, cloud seeding, that's what they called it.
It's just that cloud seeding is something loosely used, but what the military was doing was a lot more serious than cloud seeding. It was a way to use something chemically to cause rain, even if there weren't clouds, because that's what happened in the Panhandle.
You know, the Indians over there in New Mexico did a lot of rain dancing too and got-
It works.
Well, whatever works.
Well, listen, I appreciate you-
Maybe we can all do one after the meeting.
I said it twice.
I'm the only one that can dance.
Jason will, will, you can lead us.
Oh, Lou can, Lou can dance.
I dance nothing. All right.
That's it.
We're good? Well, I really appreciate it, Brian.
Yes, thank you, appreciate it.
Good presentation, thank you. Okay, and I guess there's no announcements to be told?
No, no announcements today.
So now we'll go into citizens' comments. Anybody have anything they wish to talk about?
Doug Gorreya runs us past, I'd like to thank you all, because, you know, without some of y'all, I wouldn't know what I mean when I put on Facebook. I am tired of being ridiculed by you all, the bullying, the harassment, the threats against, you know, having me removed from the P&amp;Z, which I am at every meeting doing my job, the threats against my health by whether it be you or your spouse, who knows? I'm tired of it. You guys were up here to do one job. Nothing I say on the internet is directed towards any of you or this city. I have never made a bad comment. Yeah, I say things might need a change in direction. The trash in this city needs to be picked up. I pick it up every time I stop and get out of my vehicle. Do you? Didn't think so.
Every day.
Your attacks against me need to stop. I'm tired of it, thank you.
Thanks, Doug.
Thank you.
Hey, anybody else wants to speak?
Sorry, hold on a minute. In, in the words of, we'll say Randy, if you can't do your job, then resign.
Thank you, Doug.
Think about that statement.
Okay, now we're going to move into action items.
Excuse me, Mayor, we have received a request to, to deviate from the agenda and move, um, item 11, 11.11 to the beginning of the meeting.
Okay, that's fine.
That's an item related to the pavilion.
Okay.
Good evening, Mayor and Council, um, this is an item pertaining to the pavilion project at Community Park. Um, just a few months ago, we approved, uh, with your blessing, to move forward with our engineer selection, and we are now at the point where we are ready to go, um, request for proposals for construction. And so, um, this is a project, as I'll remind everyone, that's been graciously funded through the MDD board, and, um, so I have here from Lynn Engineering, uh, Mitchell Carrillo, who's going to be presenting some details on the construction side. They will be assisting and writing the RFP so that it is, um, very applicable and specific to this project, so I'll, I'll invite Mitchell up at this time for his presentation.
Okay.
Thank you, Brian.
Thank you all.
Thank you.
Yes.
The plans probably, I don't know.
The, the site, the site?
Yeah, the site plan's-
Okay.
Um, so, if you're familiar with the shrimpery, uh, property where they have the shrimpery, we're proposing a 110 by 180 pre-engineered metal building, uh, pavilion. It'll have two basketball courts and three pickleball courts. Uh, it's set up for, uh, the shrimpery event, so you'll have full power, full lighting. Uh, we have ADA parking, or not parking, but access to the parking lot via ADA sidewalk and ramps. All the equipment there is, is off the ground, pickleball, uh, nets are collapsible and removable. Uh, we have a budget proposed, I think, I think we'll probably have majority of the bids coming under that budget, um, and we're just wanting authorization to go out for bid.
How many courts does it have?
Uh, if you go to the floor, the other drawing, the floor plan, uh, go to the second sheet. So this is the layout, so there's two basketball courts and then three pickleball courts. When you guys have the shrimpery event, if you want to have concerts, you know, whatever, everything's off the ground, so there'll be no obstruction besides the columns.
And I think I discussed this with Elise, I think one of our concerns is that what if we have groups that want to use the, the courts at the same time, and they all want to play basketball, or they all want to play pickleball? Is there a way to designate the courts for pickleball and the courts for basketball, or no?
Well, I mean, they'll be painted, they'll, you know, obviously they'll be painted on the, but there's not going to be fencing or anything permanent-
There's nothing keeping them from being used for different sports.
But this, the way it is right now, like, everyone can be playing all at one time.
Yeah, everybody can play at the same time.
Everybody-
Yeah, there's not going to be cross lines, see how-
You just hope they play nice.
That looks really good. Yeah, we were afraid it was like-
Mixed, no.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
Yeah, mixed in, and so we were concerned that like our pickleball players wouldn't be able to use it-
Or vice versa.
-or vice versa.
Yeah, they can both play the same-
Yeah, the kids get in there and they're like, it's, you know, we want the courts or whatever, I don't know.
Are you looking to have the framework galvanized steel for this thing?
Yeah, everything's galvanized, all the steel's galvanized, we have concrete pedestals up to four foot, you know, just in case there's any flooding or anything. Uh, there'll be a softet on the underside of the metal to keep all that light gauge pearling and girts covered.
What's the warranty?
Uh, the paint on the, on the metal panels will probably have a 30-year warranty, you'll have a one-year workmanship warranty from the erector, that'll be included in the spec. Um, but the pre-engineered metal building manufacturer is going to be difficult for them to warranty and then galvanize that close to the water.
Yeah.
I think this is closer than 600 feet from the water, so.
Any questions, Randy?
This is right on the shrimpery grounds.
Yep.
Is it like right in the middle?
Yeah, it's all, I mean, we, we saw a picture of where you guys put the tent, and we put this building exactly in the tent.
So, future planning, we probably need restroom facilities out there.
Help it.
I know we have some, but it's a little bit of a walk, if you're going to go use a restroom at the Little League fields.
Well, that's why there's a lot of porta potties for events.
I think let's start with this.
We have a new porta potty business in town.
I think we'll use them.
We were kind of instructed to just have it almost a one-for-one of what you guys are getting now-
Yeah.
-which is larger, and also with the-
I mean, I'm, it's going to be nice, I'm excited about it, yeah.
Boy, that's been a work for years.
Yeah, this, looks great.
What is the law on bathrooms in this type of facility?
You're not required to provide them, but if you do provide them, they do have to be ADA.
There's bathrooms on the shrimpery grounds, but I don't think they're-
No, they're far, no.
Well, they're, people are out there to exercise.
There is a, there is a building there-
Yeah.
And, and that's a two-story building. There are bathrooms there.
Yeah, it's just a little bit of a walk.
They're out there exercising.
It's a little bit of a walk.
And they can walk. Extra step.
But if they're out there getting exercise, they can walk to the restrooms, at least there's something out there, so, okay.
I think it looks, I, I'm excited because I thought the lines were all going to cross and we, I was like, I don't know.
Yeah.
This is great.
Yeah, um, I like the, I like it too.
The layout's great.
The layout's great.
Okay, so we just got them-
Oh, and then the last attachment is just the, the budget that, that we had presented a few months back that was approved. And this, this is all fees included, uh, engineering, testing, uh, and then construction, performance agreement, bond insurance, all that gets included.
Do you want me to make a motion?
Yeah.
Yeah.
I'd like to make a motion to consider an act on issuing a request for proposals for constructing the pavilion at Community Park with funding provided by the Aransas Pass Municipal Development District.
Okay, we have a motion, we have a second?
Second.
Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
Thank you all.
Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Okay, now moving to consider an act on amending ordinance number 2025-45004 of the City of Aransas Pass, Texas, a home role municipality, disannexing certain property located at 520 Jacoby Lane, Aransas Pass, Texas, Aransas County, Texas, from the corporate limits of the City of Aransas Pass, Texas, by adding Section 2 Amendment to Tax Roll provisions, providing findings of fact, providing a severability clause, and providing a, an effective date.
Yes, Mayor, I'm, I'm going to cover this one. The council approved this ordinance back in, uh, maybe October of this year, pretty much de-anexing this piece of property. However, when, uh, the property owner took this, uh, I guess, ordinance to the appraisal district, there was an issue as far as the, uh, the timeframe. I think the, uh, the prior ordinance just read that the, uh, this piece of property is going to be taken off the tax rolls effective when we passed it, right? But that left the, uh, the 2024, 2025 taxing, uh, entity that was saying, well, you're still going to be responsible for paying those taxes for 2024 through 2025. So that's what this does, it amends that and gives us that date, uh, that it should be effective from, uh, I think, January of, uh, January 1st, 2024, through December 31st of 2025. Okay, so that's included in Section 2.
Okay. Do we have a motion?
I make a motion to consider an act on amending ordinance number 2025-4504 of the City of Aransas Pass, Texas, a home role municipality, de-anexing certain property located at 520 Jacoby Lane, Aransas Pass, Aransas County, Texas, from the corporate limits of the City of Aransas Pass, Texas, by adding Section 2 Amendment to Tax Roll provisions, providing findings of fact, providing a severability clause, and providing an effective date.
Okay.
The date?
Yeah, what was the date, Mr. Sossi?
January 1st of 2024 through December, uh, let's see, where is that? December 31st of 2025.
January 1st, 2024 through December 31st of 2025.
Okay, we have a motion on the floor, we have a second?
A second.
Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. All right, now, we're going to consider an act on the police department's request to have a Gable boathouse roof constructed and a boat lift installed at the Harbor Master's office funded by the Crime Control and Prevention District.
Mayor, Council, uh, when we purchased the boat earlier this year, uh, you asked us to, to look at getting the covering for, for this, uh, boat. So, Assistant Chief Jones, the Harbor Master, uh, both of them reached out to different companies to, to see if we could get this taken care of. Uh, they proposed, uh, then, or they presented quotes from three different companies with, uh, six different options, and, uh, the Crime Control Prevention District, uh, the Smart Docs and Deck LLC, uh, for making the, the awning with another boat ramp or another boat lift involved, not for, not to exceed 103,515, so I'm asking if y'all would approve that. We do have a representative here, if y'all do have any questions, and Assistant Chief Jones is here as well.
What's the total price?
The total price is not to exceed 103,515.
That's a lot.
And that's the price on that, Gable, that's the price on it?
It, that is the price, correct.
Is this something we could go for an RFP where we put it out to the public? I know they got three quotes, but is it-
It's, it's funded by Crime Control.
So does that matter? I mean, it's still money for the city. I mean, that just seems, we, we'll still have to go out for an RFP.
Yeah, I think if we did it, then we'd have to pay for it.
Yeah, but we're still going to go out for an RFP even though it's funded by Crime Control.
Yeah.
Okay.
Any questions from the building?
No, I already asked Meyer.
Want to make a motion?
Chief told me no, Ray Chief told me no.
Ready? Lou, any questions? I'd like to make a motion to consider- I'd like to make a motion to consider an act on the police department's request to have a.
Excuse me, I think there's another question.
Are we awarding this contract tonight?
It doesn't have an amount.
I don't.
We're asking for the award.
No, you, we need to go through an RFP process because the business vendor is a buy board or a purchasing cooperative vendor. Then you can go ahead and award the contract.
If you read the item the way it's worded, it's not a warning, it's a request to have a a cable boat house roof constructed and a boat lift installed at the Harbor Masters office. But it's, it doesn't talk about awarding it to any one contractor.
Mm mm. They'd have to bring it back, right?
So Mayor, Mayor Council, i- if we do need to go out for the RFPs, I wasn't clear on that process. If we do need to go out for RFPs, then we will take this information, go back out for RFPs and then re-present it once we do that.
I think it's it's written to issue an RFP for a cable, I mean, a cable boat house roof constructed and a boat lift. I think that's the way it's worded, to go out for an RFP.
If we go out for an RFP, or if the crime board goes out for an RFP, does that get put out to the public the same way ours does? Or is it just y'all get, they just get the quotes?
No. It's going to go out, yes.
Okay.
Because this, I mean, the way I look at this, it's not awarding it to anyone contractor to construct this, yes.
It's just saying we're going to go out for one.
And we're. Okay, yes, we did have a.
I think it's just making sure.
I'll get with Sandra and we'll go back out.
Yeah, I think we just got a little messed up on the.
Yeah, we'll sort that out and we'll bring it back.
Did I miss something or didn't you say you had six?
We we have quotes.
Six quotes?
Yes.
No.
I'm sorry, th- three quotes, six different options. We, each company presented different options.
Okay, you've got three quotes.
No, well. It still needs to go out the right protocol.
It has to go out for an RFP.
For the protocol.
The way that I read the item, the way that it's posted, it's not awarding the contract. If it was awarding the contract, it would say that we're awarding a contract to a particular vendor. This doesn't mention a vendor. I read it as going out for an RFP for the construction of a cable boat house and a and a boat lift. But if there's confusion, we can bring this back. We can postpone it and bring it back at the next meeting to.
That's all I was saying, we just postpone it till we get it straight.
Or we can just make a motion.
The people that put in the quotes, they can still submit it again or however to do it technical. And then it still opens it up to the, anyone else that wants to.
If it's an option to the council, maybe we could approve to go out for the RFPs and then we could just bring it back once we get the RFPs.
I'd like to do that.
We can do that. I mean, that's the way that it's worded.
Yeah, okay. Let's do that. Aaron and C, and then that way, and the ones that have already done it, I would assume either, you'll have to get with Sandra if they can just submit it that way or whatever, I don't know, or if they want to re-submit it. Narrow down to exactly what we want.
If y'all, if y'all approve us to go back, go for the RFPs, then we'll work that out with Sandra.
Okay.
We'll get that posted and then bring it back after that.
And that's my mistake, sorry about that.
No, that's okay.
Do you want me to change the wording and just add the going out for the RFP process?
Well, you'd have to make a motion to amend and if you want to change the wording, the only way you can do it.
Okay, I'll make a motion to amend number eight two and add the wording to go out for the RFP process.
Second.
Oh, any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye. And now we bring it back.
Okay, now you have to.
Vote on the motion.
You got to vote on the motion that amended, so you'll have to read what you wrote down.
Okay. I make a motion to consider an act on the police department's request to have a Gable boat house roof constructed and a boat lift installed at the Harbor Masters office funded by the Crime Control Board and Prevention District using the process of going out for an RFP.
Okay, we have a motion on the floor. We have a second?
Second.
Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries. Good deal.
Thank you.
Okay, now, consider an act to award the request for proposals to Associated Construction Partners LTD for the Wheeler and Huff Storm Pump Station improvements in the amount of three million forty four thousand six hundred and forty two dollars. And this makes me happy, finally.
We're very close to breaking ground.
I know.
Breaking ground on the pump station.
This will be the fourth pump station. I know I mentioned it to you before. We have to go back and negotiate with the contractor, but it looks like we're, the funds are short, about two hundred and six thousand out of the, what, three million? Change. So if you guys are willing to accept that, I think we're going with that difference is coming from.
We're going to include that in the tax note.
The tax note. So although tax notice isn't coming in for another month or so, we could still move forward because it's probably going to take that long to get the documents ready. They still need to get their their payment bonds, performance bonds, to sign agreements and and it's JLO funded, so they're it's like molasses out there, so if you guys are confident in improving this project, then we can at least begin the process.
Well, the old saying, better late never to come here because this is forty three, forty three, this should have been done forty three years ago. And I was told a story by somebody, said you could tell him the last person was mayor had that last name and everybody else isn't walking on the planet, so how long it's been going.
Were you even born yet?
I was five. But I I know it's on pumps and somebody else is in here, we talked about if you could sometime, if we could get an update at a future agenda about the the Euclid, the Euclid pump progress was going on the ditch.
I thought that was already done.
Well, it's still in the works. Well, do we got a motion?
I'll make a motion to consider an act to award the request for proposal to Associated Construction Partners LTD for the Wheeler and Huff Stormwater Pump Station improvements in the amount of three million forty four thousand six hundred and forty two dollars.
Okay, we have a motion. Do we have a second?
Second.
Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries. Thank you, David.
Congratulations, Jason.
That makes me happy.
I saw it on the map that it was recommended back in the eighties to add this pump. I think it was nineteen eighty three.
Yep.
Is when this pump really showed.
Wow.
It'd be worn out by now.
I wasn't that much older than you.
I've been on this pump.
Trying to get on top of things, you know?
Well, I've been on this pump since I first got over there. It's it's been a nightmare, but I'm glad to see it. Okay, now we're going to consider an act on accepting Turbaville, if I said that right, construction letter to withdraw their proposal for installing twenty nine parking lot lights at Harbor Point Park for twenty thousand eight hundred and seventy six dollars, seventy five cents and to offer the project to the next lowest bidder.
Yeah, so it's a it's a two part approval. So first we would accept the letter of withdrawal and the next one we follow to award the next bidder. But we had, I had sent him a notice of an award, so it's not taking any combining, just to let him know, hey, you've been selected. Can you get your documents ready? And he spoke to me, he said there was some discrepancies in the bid. Usually when a bid's over a certain dollar amount, like a hundred thousand dollars or more, they would submit a bid bond. And they were to withdraw, then technically we would have the right to cash in that five percent bid bond and use it to cover expenses to award to the next bidder. But since it was such a low threshold, there was not a requirement to submit a bid bond. So there's nothing we can really cash in. So at this point, it'd be wise to just accept the withdrawal and go from there.
Okay, all right.
Do we know how much the next lowest bid is?
Yeah.
Yeah.
It's the next item.
Oh, okay. Sorry. I didn't read that far. My bad.
Yeah, so theoretically, even if you choose not to accept the next bid, it's actually recommended you still accept the withdrawal letter. So we can just get that closed down.
Okay.
I'll make a motion to consider an act on accepting Turbaville construction letter to withdraw the proposal for installing twenty nine parking lot lights at Harbor Point Park for twenty thousand eight hundred and seventy six dollars and seventy five cents and to offer the project to the next lowest bidder.
Okay, we have a motion on the floor. Do we have a second?
Second.
Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries. All right, moving right along, we're going to consider an act on approving ten point services to install twenty nine parking lot lights at Harbor Point Park for thirty four thousand seven hundred and thirty nine dollars and sixty cents.
Yeah, so this project for some reason had a wide range of bids. For example, we had the twenty thousand dollar bid that withdrew, we had thirty four thousand. And the next, the third bid was sixty five thousand, so it's like literally twenty thousand increments. But then again, it's more like a specialty project. There's not really anything that's that, it's it's not like a like a water line where you can already expect what it's going to cost. These are specific light models, there are certain lifts, man lifts you got to use and things of that sort, so. That might be the reason why the bids are so sporadic, but nevertheless, this is the next bidder. You know, I can't guarantee they're not going to withdraw, but at the same time, you know, to do the due diligence, our next step is to at least award them, give them notice of award and begin their paperwork.
And what was the funding source on this, David, just so everybody knows? That's what I'm talking about. Okay.
Are we okay on the hot funds on it?
Um, I do have a question because we've had issues with lights. So are these LED lights or are they those low yellow awful lights?
No, they're they're they're.
They're the bright LED lights? Okay.
So they should last.
Now, I'm thinking about the sooting bulbs anymore.
They still have them. AEP still uses them.
Specifically reference a certain model, so all these three bidders bid that same model.
Okay.
So it's not going to be like, this is one brand, that's another brand, we we posted an RFP, this is what we want.
It'll all you look nice, bright, uniform, across.
I got, I'll make a motion to approve ten point services to install twenty nine parking lot lights at Harbor Point Park for thirty four thousand seven hundred and thirty nine dollars and sixty cents.
A second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Okay, consider an act on approving a request for proposals for the demolition of the green storage tanks located at Com Brown Harbor.
Yes.
That's another good one.
So, yeah, we ordered a testing kit from.
David, I'm sorry.
Excuse me, but the the last one that you guys just quoted on, I noticed that it said that it was under the hot funds. And hot funds are not supposed to be used for infrastructure from everything that I've seen in past cities.
No, it's not infrastructure. We can use it for for lighting. It's for lighting.
Yeah, yeah, come up, come up here real quick.
Yeah, it it can be used for lighting if it directly affects tourists.
I'm sorry, could you introduce yourself?
Zach with Glow Road.
Okay. It'll be at the, it's at the harbor where the boat ramp is.
Yes, ma'am. And if that is at the harbor and where the boat ramp is, if it directly affects overnight stays, then it's permitted under the law. If it is not, then it's it's not permitted to use for hot funds.
Well, the harbor is used by tourists all the time.
Yeah.
That's why people come down here is to go fishing.
And we have the night beers and.
Yeah, somebody pulls a boat, puts it in the water at midnight and they're from Santa Tonne, they just
Yes.
possibly had some, I rent a hotel room.
Okay.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Yeah, so.
Oh, yeah, the demo.
Did you read it?
Huh?
No, yes, he did.
Yeah, I had to remember.
Yeah, yeah.
Uh, yeah, so we're going to do an RFP for this one. We did order a testing kit from Amazon. I know it's, doesn't sound like it's legit, but the paint does contain lead, so at that point, we have to get somebody who could properly dispose it. We're still doing some research on how to dispose it. They might have to blast it off and then dispose the tank, but either way, we'll get that set up before we do the RFP.
Okay.
But at this point, all we're doing is just permission to advertise. We'll see what the numbers look like. We'll bring it forward and at that point, hopefully, we'll find the funding source and come up with a plan by then.
Okay.
At this point, it doesn't hurt to just advertise and see what the number is because I wouldn't be able to come up with a budget number. I don't demolish tanks and it will cost a demolished one. So if he told me, I'd just be.
Throwing out a number.
Yeah.
Not pushing roulette, but I'd be paying roulette.
Yeah.
Guessing a number and see what happens.
Okay.
Gotcha.
This will help us identify funding board.
Okay, I'll make a motion to consider an act on proving request for proposal for the demolition of green storage tanks located at Com Brown Harbor.
Okay, we have a motion on the floor. We have a second?
Second.
Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries.
Thank you.
Thank you, David.
Thank you.
Okay, now we're going to consider an act to approve an agreement with Brenda McElwee PC for auditing services of hotel occupancy tax funds provided to the Aransas Pass Chamber of Commerce and AMP Visitor Center for years twenty twenty three and twenty twenty four at an hourly hourly rate of three hundred dollars with total fees expected to range from fif- ten thousand five hundred, not to exceed fifteen thousand dollars.
Fifteen or thirteen? Yeah, fifteen, I'm sorry. My bad.
Got it right.
Thank you, David.
Thank you.
At the last council meeting, the the council directed me to reach out to Mrs. McElwee to to ask her about conducting an audit of the hot funds awarded to the chamber. She has submitted her agreement. It's for years twenty twenty three and twenty twenty four. So this is the action before the council today.
Do you wish to speak, ma'am?
Come to the podium.
Good afternoon.
Hi.
I'm Kristy Langley. And I want to speak on behalf of some books that the chamber has that was aired to a family member. She's ill, she's here. And we have airship paperwork and all went down and asked for the books and they denied them to us.
Yeah, ma'am, if you could, do, I think you've been talking, because we, yeah, we can't really talk about this because this isn't on this particular agenda item.
You would have had to talk on public comment, I think, on this, but.
Yeah, it doesn't pertain, your your comments don't pertain to the item that's posted on the agenda.
Can we get them on the agenda? Or get them to get her to the right department for who she needs to talk to?
How do we get on the agenda so we can speak on this? Because this is very important.
That's just a request. One of the council members has to request to put her on the agenda, right?
Either that or you can speak under citizen comments at the next council meeting.
Yeah, if you want to talk to her about.
Or we can talk to you. Do you want to talk to her after the meeting?
Yeah, I've re-spoken with her.
Oh, you have?
Okay.
Okay. Does she need to be on the agenda? Do you want her on the agenda or is this?
Just add her to the agenda for the next meeting.
Okay, I will get your contact information.
Okay, and I do want to get with you on this. We can give you my information.
Yes, ma'am.
Can I come over there?
Yes.
Thank you, ma'am.
Thank you. Appreciate it.
We'll see you in two weeks.
Okay, you need a motion on this?
Yep.
I make a motion, we consider an act approving an agreement with Brenda McElwee PC for auditing services of hotel occupancy tax hot funds provided to the Aransas Pass Chamber of Commerce and Visitor Center for the years twenty twenty three and twenty twenty four at an hourly rate of three hundred dollars with a total fees expected to range from ten thousand five hundred, not to exceed fifteen thousand.
Okay, we have a motion. Do we have a second?
Second.
Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries. Okay, now we're going to move into consider an act on resolution amending the guidelines for the expenditure of hotel motel occupancy tax funds.
The the current hotel occupancy tax guidelines allow for applications for hot funds to be accepted every odd numbered years. This proposed amendment is revising that policy, so the applications are now accepted on an annual basis. If the council approves this amendment, then the application period will start January one and it'll go through March thirty first. And we will follow every year thereafter.
Is there a way to do this twice a year or is there, is there a reason why we're doing it?
No, you can come anytime. It's just that will be the open period, like where we're budgeting for it. And someone could still come in June and ask for it, but we'll, we'll see what's left at the budget at that point. Do you know what I mean?
So there's money leftovers.
Yeah, they can come in December, you know what I mean, and say, hey, I'm doing an event in one week and it's just, this is to help budget. Do what?
We're not extending it after March, are we?
Yeah, well, the 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 application period is going to be for three months. I mean, I think that would allow us to capture most of the requests, but I know that from time to time, there are other requests that come in throughout the year. However, we would prefer that they come in during that.
Yeah, especially for annual events. That they, they know it's going to be there, but then you occasionally have someone who throws a pop up festival and it doesn't mean they can't come and ask us. I mean, they can come anytime they want. It just doesn't mean that there'll be money in there.
As long as it's a fair process, like if we're requesting, if we have one, if we have somebody coming to wanting to do an event and it's like a birding festival, we're requiring them to provide receipts for the festivals, then we should be making all of these individuals that are wanting to do events to provide those receipts as well. Because it's, it seemed very pick and choosing, like you have to do it, but you don't. And it just needs to be a fair process, I feel like, across the board.
Most of the times what happens is that when they come and apply and ask for funds, th- they come and make their presentation. And they kind of give you an idea of what they expect their budget's gonna be, right? Uh, and then you award, say, seven percent or whatever you're gonna award to them. The following year, when they come back and again ask for, you know, let's say, a little bit more, then that's when they kind of give you a rundown as to how they spent their money the previous year, whether they have any money left over. Uh, then if they do, then of course, you take that into consideration in making your award, right? But they have to give you an explanation as how they use those funds the previous, or the, the next year when they come up and ask.
Yeah, I would, I would like to add that the process does allow for a post-event report to be submitted to the city, um, so many days after the event.
Okay.
And actually, I have it on my thing to make an appointment with you to work on, to work on the pre and post applications, just make sure we're on that. But that will be one of the things, is there will be receipts that are required.
Okay.
Proof, proof of spending.
People can say whatever they want to say.
We have to, we have to see a receipt.
Balances.
And, um, a copy of the check or credit card statement that shows that it was spent correctly, because ultimately, the hot funds, if we were responsible for them, so, yes, it'll be fair all the way across the board, it'll be the same, it'll be unilateral, what's asked from every person.
Okay, I'll, 'cause, uh.
Hey, before we go into making the motion, uh, my opinion of this is if we're gonna do it all year long, why are we worried about January through March? If we're gonna put a time limit on it, we put a time limit on it, if they're gonna do it, they do it then, or we don't do it at all.
It's more for just, that's for the budget, which, yes, we want everyone to come before us, but in case something does pop up, there's always a chance that it could be something fantastic somebody thinks of, and we don't want to cut that event out if the funds may still be there, and because we're gonna always, every year, at least while we're, hold some hot funds back, and you never know where that's gonna go, just like right now, we're having to use hot funds, we're gonna use it for the lighting, like, we're always gonna have some that's going for something, so there may be something that comes toward the end of the year where someone didn't know they were gonna have an event, and it could be really great and benefit the city. So we want to give that option, but there also might be a time where someone comes in that we say, we're tapped out, like, we, this is a great idea, great event, but hey, you're gonna have to fund it all yourself this year, come back and see us in January.
It's, it's up to the, it's up to the council, if the council wants to make those exceptions. Um, but the process does allow for applications to be submitted during this three-month period.
I mean, yeah, if you wanna think about it like that, that's fine, I mean, I just think that, I don't want to miss out on opportunity, we can always say, we always say no if there's not a budget.
About missing out on an opportunity, if you're gonna not miss out on opportunity, don't put a time limit on it at all.
I mean, as long as there's money.
As long as there's money, we can use it.
Money, we can award it.
Well, if, it, it, that's, that's a desire of the council.
But having people come in January through March, it just gives us a picture of our yearly expenditure, of what we know we're gonna spend.
It's like, we know certain festivals are happening every year, we want those event coordinators to come in front of us and say, okay, so we're gonna do this, this year, blah, blah, so then that gives us an idea, okay, we know that this is gonna be accounted for when this money comes in. If we just wait and let them come anytime of year, then we're not gonna, I mean, we could end up short chain, we could end up not being able to help an event that has been going on for twenty years or plus, because, well, fifteen other people came, it's just, it's just to give structure. But if y'all want to go with, it's only January through March, I mean.
I withdraw my reasoning.
It's unreasonable.
It's unreasonable.
Look at the January to March as being every one of our departments submitting their budgets.
You're more apt to get approved for something.
What the massive expenditure is gonna be for the year.
Yeah.
And then what, whatever comes in afterwards, if we have the monies.
Someone may want to have some kind of contest, and it brings in people, and I don't know.
Okay, now go. Okay, now, right.
Okay.
This, the purpose of this is to create a system and create uniformity to it, right? Uh, you can pass this, and again, what you're creating is a system and uniformity to the process, which is what you need. However, if somebody comes in in June or July, then you can consider an exception. But at least you have a plan, you've got uniformity, that, that's fair, the process, you know what I'm saying?
We can decide on big projects too, within go, and that, if somebody comes in June or July, and that money, we've already said, hey, we're gonna do this great project with the hot funds that, you know, that it can be used for, there just may not be money for them.
How much of the hot funds can be carried over every year?
I'm gonna refer to Sandra on that, I, I.
Oh, Sandra will tell you stops, if it gets low, she'll say, she told me before, stop spending money, I remember.
Tell everybody that. I believe that we were gonna be holding back something somewhere around ten percent.
Thirty percent?
Thirty, was it thirty? So we're gonna be holding that back, I agree, there needs, in my opinion, there needs to be a uniformity, there needs to be beginning and ending period, if not, if you're gonna hold an event that's gonna require us to fund it, then you should be planning it out months and months ahead of time. Instead of coming in last minute, saying, I need ten thousand dollars for this great event I'm gonna have in two weeks from now. If you have it through the open period, like, like they're saying, the three months, it gives you, it gives staff also, the budgeting and everything.
Would it be better if we just cut it off then in March, and then nobody can come until January again?
Honest with you, yes.
Well, because we're already saying you can do it every year now, and it was every other year.
Yes, I think that that would be the fair thing, because then if you open it from January to March.
I mean, I'm fine with that, I just was.
And then I come, somebody else comes in afterwards, they're gonna be like, well, why does he or she get to apply after everybody, you know what I mean, it just creates.
I feel the same.
I disagree, because we don't want to leave money on the table, 'cause then the state can easily take it away from us.
The state controller doesn't come and take the money away from you.
Do, do we have to spend a certain percentage?
No, ma'am, you do not.
So if, hypothetically, if one year we were like, we're gonna save ninety percent?
I think that the reason why we were doing it staggeringly, Mary, remind me, is because we were trying to grow the amount that we were gonna contribute to that we could have a bigger pool every two years to give to those big events. And that's, I think, was some of the reasoning behind the staggering of every two years.
Fine with that, I mean, I'm, I'm not like, this isn't.
But doing it every year and having some money to give to, you may not have as much to give, because you're gonna base that money on the previous year's collections. You may not have as much, but you'll donate, you'll, you'll fund events every year. But it's up to you, but I think that the part of the reasoning was to create that pot bigger, to have more money to award every two years.
And also to be able to do some bigger projects.
Correct, yes.
Well, then, I'm, I'm fine if y'all want to do that, and I mean, worst case is we go a year or two years, and we go, hey, we got, had a lot of people come in that had some really great ideas, and we weren't able to help them, let's amend it, we can, we can do that, right?
I think, the first year that we did it, I mean, correct me, Senator, if I'm wrong, but I think we awarded a total, it was under thirty thousand, it wasn't
Yeah, it wasn't much, wasn't much at all.
Okay. I'm good with that, are, Lou?
Whatever y'all, I mean, how are y'all feeling?
Are you still okay with it? Or?
I mean, I want, I want the deadline, I want the deadline being March, but I'm fine with.
March.
I'm either way, I'm here.
Which one are we doing?
To.
I'm confused.
No, I, I like the January through March, I'm not opposed to that at all, I think that's wonderful. But I also think, depending on the circumstance, we should be able to, to consider other things that they happen to come up, and they're worth us considering.
And, and, and we can have the deadline, the application period, and if there is a request that comes in, we will continue to bring it to council, and it's up to the couns- it's at the council's discretion on whether they want to consider it or not.
Perfect.
Okay.
That's fine. No worries. Okay, um, I make a motion, um, on the resolution amending the guidelines for the expenditure of hotel motel occupancy tax funds.
I'll second.
We have a motion and a second, any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All opposed, motion carries. Okay, next item.
Okay, the next item is, um, to, uh, uh, it's to consider an act to award a request for qualifications for economic development consultant services. An RFQ was issued, we received a total of seven proposals. Um, these proposals have been provided to the council for review. Uh, I would like to add that we did go to the Aransas Pass Municipal Development District, and they are funding these services for a two-year period at eighty-five thousand annually.
Yeah, and just so everybody knows, the, the funding will not come out of the general fund, which means one red cent of your property taxes won't pay for this. It's sales taxes funding this position. And, uh, with that being said, so we have a motion.
I make a motion that we award an RFQ to for economic development consultant services to Kalen Paxson for a year, for a two-year period at eighty-five thousand dollars annually, to commence December sixteenth, to allow for a two-week resignation for her current employment as Director of Community Enrichment.
Okay, we have a motion on the floor, do we have a second?
Question before we vote. Um, Mr. Sassi, could you speak on the fact that if we award this, um, to Ms. Paxson, the, there's been, there's been some out there that think that this is a conflict of interest because of her position with the City of Corpus Christi. I actually think it's a benefit, because it allows for her relationships, partnerships, and networking abilities. But could you speak on whether that's a conflict?
No, and, and I think that's, that's one of the issues that, that I looked at, uh, when we went to the economic development, 'cause somebody had posed that question. And it's not, it's not a conflict of interest at all. Um, I think where she sits on a city council over in, in Corpus Christi, this would be a consultant position, uh, for the city. Uh, to where she's not drawing, uh, an income from, from, uh, Corpus Christi as an employee, she sits on a city council, she's not an employee. Uh, and he or she would be a consultant with the city, so therefore, she's not an employee of our city. She's gonna be a consultant, which, again, she'll get, I think, a ten ninety-nine at the end of the year, instead of, uh,
Exactly.
Uh, being an employee for the city.
Okay, I just wanted that clarified for this.
Thank you for having that clarified. I second.
Did you?
I'm seconding.
Okay, any further discussion? All in favor?
Did anybody, did anybody ask her if she'd accept this position?
No.
Didn't say nothing.
There's no choice now, sorry.
Okay.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Done.
All opposed, motion carries.
Congratulations.
Congratulations.
Okay, now, where are we at?
Executive session.
Oh, thank, very good, okay, now we're going to executive session, and we have one item, it's Glow Road LLC Lighthouse Lake Trails.
One more, there's one more to do, um, which is eight point ten.
I'm going blind, my bad.
Yeah, what's the?
Okay, deliberations regarding economic development negotiations related to.
Uh, yeah.
Eight, eight X.
Eight, 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 ten.
Request for qualifications for public relations.
I, okay, I make a motion on the issuance.
Oh, damn.
Do you need to tell us what it is?
Yeah.
Do you know what it is?
I, I was just gonna mention that at the last council meeting, that, that council accepted the, the request from Mr. Rowland, who agreed to terminate these services. So this action today will allow us to go out for RFP, um, for public relation services.
Okay, I'll make a motion concerning act on the issuance of request for qualifications RFQ for public relation services.
Okay, we got a motion and a second, any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed, motion carries. Now, we're gonna go into executive session, and we're gonna discuss Glow Road LLC Lighthouse Lake Trails Park Agreement. And it is seven thirty-six PM.
Okay, we're gonna reconvene an open session and it is 8:09 PM. And there is no action to be taken out of executive session.